My seat, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We're gonna start with the opening session prayer that's gonna be given by Mike Hayes and the Pledge of Allegiance by Mike Sullivan.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just wanna thank you for this day, Lord, and thank you for everything you've given us. Lord be with us tonight as we make the best decisions for our kids and our school system and all of our employees in our school system. Lord be with all those that are sick and at home, and you know who those are, and put your healing hand upon them, Father. Lord be with our troops that are supporting this great country overseas and at home, for in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, ask for a motion for approval of the minutes from the April ninth, two thousand and nineteen meeting. Do I have a motion for that? Motion by Dr. Stiles, seconded by Mike Sullivan. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and now we come to the addition, the additions or deletions to the proposed agenda. We are actually going to move the WELL Child from the work session agenda to the board meeting agenda. The WELL Child is a program that allows vision tests and listening hearing tests, everything for our kids. Jenny Smith presented this to us last year, and we voted on to do it for one year, so this year we'll be voting on to continue for another year.
I'll make a motion when you end up.
I'll second it.
Thank you all very much. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and then we've got approval of the May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting agenda.
Which one?
Uh, do you want us to just bid, get bids on it, to vote to get bids?
On the rock, Phil.
Uh, on the, adding also the, uh, get bids on gravel and fell for the parking lot at Richmond. The one that's out besides the, the existing parking lot at the gym.
We had sixty-four hundred dollars left standing back there.
Okay, do I have a motion to add that?
I'll make that motion.
I second it.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, well, add that too. Is there anything else? Okay, so we'll move on to the approval of the May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mike Sullivan, seconded by Jarman Hicks. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? First thing that we'll do is the executive action items, approval of the FY twenty consolidated applications.
That should've been sent out in your packet.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the executive items. A motion by Dr. Diane Sadler, seconded by Mike Hayes. Any discussion?
I've got a question. Can somebody explain this to me? I'm, I'm familiar with it.
It comes from the State Department, and it is just saying that we are accepting what they are sending to us this year in our federal money consolidated. We have to recognize it in the board meeting, approve it, and return it back to the state.
Gotcha.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. We, we have the quarterly reports that was sent out to everybody in their packet. Approval of the Read to Be Ready Summer Grant Budget. Letters of resignation from Doris Cooper, letters of resignation from Felicity Smith. Felicia Smith, sorry about that. Letters of resignations from Tiffany Deming and Crystal Garrett. And trips FCC LA, FBI LA, FFA, HOSA overnight trip to the Standing Stone State Park, September third, two thousand and nineteen, to September fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Allen's Elementary School Beta Club trip to Pigeon Forge to the Wilderness in the Smokies, May eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Allen's Elementary School eighth grade trip to Sevierville, Tennessee, to attend Tennessee Smokies baseball game, and Trampoline Fund Center, May third, two thousand and nineteen. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Motion by Rick Dodson, seconded by Jarman Hicks. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll move into the new business items. The first thing is naming of the athletic facilities after Sean Moffett.
And that would be the area that's the training facility at the high school. And I think everybody knows that situation. And obviously, we all pray for that family.
Do I have a motion for that? Motion by Mike Hayes, seconded by Mike Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the next thing on there is approval of the, the WELL Child program. Do I have a motion for that approval? Motion by Mike Sullivan, seconded by Ricky Dodson. Any discussion on that?
I just asked that, during this process, they coordinate with our principals to make sure that it's not interfering any instructional time, I guess. But I don't know how that's scheduled, if that's through us, through them, or how that works, but just make sure that's not an inappropriate time.
Got it. Okay, we have any other discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and that brings us to the bids on the gravel and fell for the Richmond parking lot. Do I have a motion for that? Motion by Ricky Dodson, seconded by Howard Miller. Any discussion?
Yeah, and, and we're not, we're not voting to spend money right now, we're just taking bids.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? With the new business items being finished, we're gonna move on to the OCEA recognition. Okay, a representative from OCEA is not in attendance. I'll ask the director, is there anything good that's going on?
Uh, yeah, we, we actually had some, uh, really good news academically, uh, this past week. We, of course, we have all kinds of kids involved in statewide dual credit classes, some AP classes, um, lots of local dual credit classes. But one of our, uh, classes, uh, that's a statewide dual credit class is American history. And we had five percent of our kids this year pass that test. And the state average last year for the whole state was three percent. So that's pretty, that's pretty good.
That's what they get college credit for, huh?
That is correct, yes.
That is correct. With that being said, is I'll bring the, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Dr. Diane Sadler, seconded by Ricky Dodson. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and if nobody has a problem with it, we'll move right into the work session. Okay, so with the work session agenda, we'll take the WELL Child off, and we'll move right to the Johnson Controls. Mike Hayes, are you?
Uh, Mark will probably have more to update than I will.
Yeah, um, of course, they, they're complete, you know, we, we talked last month, they've completed all the lighting, all of the water conservation, and they're moving into a phase of getting ready to replace all of those heat and air units at the high school, and then at Richmond, those three at Richmond. And they're continuing to, you know, update the systems for that heat and air control for the whole district. I think we're meeting next week, uh, with them to coordinate how we're gonna do the, the process at the high school. So we're, we're moving right along with that.
And I don't know if you've all been out to the schools to see the new lighting, but you should go out there, 'cause it really brightens the, the schools. Okay, next thing we'll move on to is the pay.
I have one question. I, I guess I missed something, are we supposed to get all new sinks and everything at the school?
I, I emailed him, and he emailed me back, and said that when they went through there, that updating the actual sink modules to conserve water, but the actual sink replacement wasn't part of the contract. But once we go through some of this other stuff, probably will change that.
Okay, the next thing that, uh, we have is pay scale for school nurse with an associate's degree.
Yeah, we've, uh, of course, had Mallory Richardson for several years as her, as her, as supervising nurse. And, uh, um, she's gonna resign, I don't know if she sent her letter in yet, but she's, she's gonna do. So we've posted a job, and the person they've recommended is, uh, someone that doesn't have a bachelor's degree, they've got an associate's degree. And so, just need to know what your opinion is as far as what pay scale we need to put that person on, because right now, the only thing we have is for a person with a bachelor's degree. We don't have a pay scale for an associate's degree.
So is their pay equivalent to a teacher with a bachelor's degree?
Yes.
So do we not have a pay scale with a teacher with an associate?
Not anymore. We used to, yes. Years ago, there was a, there was a pay scale for a two-year.
Two-year associate.
Teacher, teaching degree. But that's been years ago.
I remember seeing it on there in the past.
But, uh, but we don't have that anymore.
Is there a distinction made between a LPN and a LPN?
Yes.
Forget the, the degrees.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
That, that's something I was about to bring up. I, I looked up our pay scale, and it does, if I can find it here, uh, it doesn't clarify for a degree. It just says a registered school nurse, and they're set at this pay. And then there's an LPN pay scale, which is... Right. It, it's adjusted accordingly. But if I understand correctly, in the medical world, and I'm sorry to look at my phone, but that's just what I have with that email on. If you're an RN at Livingston Regional Hospital, you get RN pay if you have a associate's or a bachelor's. Jarman's opinion is, believe it as it is, if not, we'll have to start adjusting the entire pay scale to, for every, you know, so everyone's is according to what it should be.
Yeah, if this person's gonna recommend it, is, are they an LPN or an RN?
Well, they're an RN with an associate's degree. Is a two-year degree compared to a four-year?
Yeah, I might turn, I mean, if they're classified RN, LPN, that's kinda how we distinguish it.
Not for sure, but, oh, if you have a four-year degree, isn't there a, it's...
You take, you take the state license test.
Well, it's, it's, it's like a, uh, you have the RN and then you're, is it a BS RN or something? Bachelors of Science?
RN, yeah.
Or Registered Nurse?
That's a four-year degree.
Yeah, you, you take the same.
I'm going to graduate Christmas with it.
Yeah, you take the same licensity test to be a licensed RN, but you take two-year, four. RN is an RN.
That's great.
Uh, Steve, where's that?
You know, let's see.
Say that.
But, wow, I bought the, their degrees.
Right.
And associate degree is not the other. I'm gonna check with some counties around us and see what they...
'Cause I don't, I don't know of a, a pay scale that differentiates when it comes to the nurses. I mean, there may be one, but I don't know, without the research I've done, I couldn't find the, the variants.
Would you all want us to check on that?
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah.
We can do it. Okay, is any other schools?
Do we have any nurses now, you know, that are RNs and are BS degrees?
The, the only one that we employ right now is, is one's Rich.
And why did she go?
And she has a master's degree.
Because we have to have one RN to supervise the LPN.
Correct, yes.
So then we don't have an RN after she leaves?
Correct.
So, well, let me ask a question. So is her pay scale set at what a teacher's would be with a master's? Or just what a teacher, 'cause hers is set at what is...
I think it's with a master's degree, yes.
'Cause our, the reason I say that's, 'cause our pay scale says at a bachelor's scale. You know what I mean? If she has a master's, but at a bachelor's scale, you're, you know, we're not following her.
I, I believe she's been paid on masters ever since she started, and I'm not sure how, well, I know she's been here several years.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll check into that, and we'll let Mark come back with to us with, uh...
That brings up another question, though, uh, what if they do have a master's degree?
Right.
I mean, we've, those are just things we got inside, you know.
We should pay for them. If they've got a master's degree, we should pay for it.
Okay, so we'll do that, and we'll move on to the, uh, budget updates.
Uh, well, of course, we told you, I think last month, that we would update you monthly as we got new figures. Now, we didn't run a new budget or anything like that, but, uh, the figures that we got for April were up a little bit from what they were, and that's a good thing, if they stay there. And of course, any of you that's worked in the system knows that can fluctuate from month to month. We're hoping that they stay there or go up a little bit more between now and June. June will give us a better indication of where we are, 'cause it usually doesn't change much from June to July. And, yeah, and we don't have, uh, tax rate and things like that from the county. But the BEP number's were up just a little bit.
Well, that's good news.
Okay, we'll move on to the website design and communications. I think Brent's gonna talk to us about that.
I've got a little information for y'all. Uh, Dr. Winningham and, uh, and I've been looking at some options to maybe improve our communications through our school websites. And, uh, he asked me to, uh, come speak with everyone and, and provide a little bit of information that for you all to kind of take a look at and look at our options going forward. Uh, I also wanted to kind of, um, talk to you all about what we're currently doing for our school websites. Right now, um, you can see, I've got, uh, in this little packet, a few pages. The first, first little section is, talks about our current website. What we currently have is, uh, Google Sites for the most part. Um, Google Sites is just a free offering from Google, uh, education tools, and it's where you can go in and basically kind of plug in your text in different places. Um, you kind of are con, you know, constrained to a template, but, uh, you can kind of drag and drop modules around and, and, you know, kind of do a rough layout of a webpage. Um, and it works well as far as getting, you know, your content out there for free. Um, you know, so that's no cost to us. Uh, some schools are doing that. Uh, some schools are using, uh, a website called Wix. Um, so that's a little bit more, uh, advanced, but they, you know, that's, uh, what they're using there. Our district website is something that we've built cus, a custom build. It's hosted here on one of our servers in the district, you know, office. And, uh, so I listed some pros and cons about that. Like I mentioned, you know, what we're doing right now is free. One of the problems with it is, you know, we're kind of constrained to the, the layouts that we get from Google Sites or from Wix. And the problem that comes up is that the ADA compliance, uh, so we're talking about, uh, laws around, you know, accommodating for those with disabilities. Um, and so, um, and another thing is that it, it, the sites that we have don't work very well with mobile devices. And that's what I've listed under our needs on this next page. And so ADA compliance, like I mentioned, um, so the problems that we run into is, um, how well our sites work with, uh, things like screen readers, or if you have something that, like, uh, high contrast in text. So if somebody who has a disability is trying to use our sites, if they don't comply, um, you know, with some of the standards there, then basically our sites are unusable for those individuals. Um, so that's the case. And I've done scans, uh, on our district site and some of the school sites. Basically, the Google Sites are not in compliance at all. Our district site is about a little over half, uh, compliance, as far as that goes. Some of the other things, uh, I mentioned the screen readers, but like if you have an image on the webpage, you have to have what they call alternate text. So like if someone who is using a screen reader, obviously, they wouldn't be seeing the image, so it would read to them what that picture is showing. So those are, those are some things, uh, there as far as the ADA compliance. Another thing that we were, uh, kind of thinking about as a need is ease of access for our staff. We wanna have something that's a little bit, a lot easier for principals and for teachers to be able to update. As it is right now, it's, you know, their teachers and, and principals are concerned with two things. They're concerned with figuring out how to design and style the website, as well as putting the content in there. So this, you know, it can be time intensive. And then with a district website, then, you know, anybody that's wanting to post something there, they have to send it to me, and then I'll have to go in and update that. So it's a little slower, uh, as far as getting content out there. So that's one of the things we think we want to try to improve on, is try to get, um, a little bit better speed involved and ease for our staff to be able to update. And the next thing is the parent involvement, uh, is another need. So, of course, you know, nowadays, everybody, most people use our phones as our access to the internet. That's our primary place that we go to, and especially, you know, our parents and our students. And so if we're, you know, thinking about, uh, improving our communication with the community, then we wanna think about, are we, do we have a good mobile presence? Is our, are our sites working well on mobile devices? And, you know, I think we're coming up short in that area. And we also wanna think about, how well are we covering the school in, in the social media space? That's, you know, we have a Facebook, uh, page right now for the district, and some of the schools have Facebook pages. Um, but, you know, that's just, that's kind of one of those things where it's another piece that we, we have to, to maintain, uh, as a district or, uh, as a school. So there's two main, um, platforms that we've been looking at. One of those is Ed Leo, and the other one is called Apogee. And, um, so I've listed out, uh, some of the key features here, and I've also listed some examples of districts that are using these sites in Tennessee. And so I thought that would be handy for you all to kind of get on and take a look at, um, sometime. So you can kind of get a feel for the way these sites look compared to the way our sites look right now. Um, and I just wanted to point out some of the key features of, um, that these, that these things will, or these platforms will offer us. Uh, they integrate with social media. So if a principal or a teacher or, uh, the district office staff posts some good event that's happening in school to the website, it'll also post up over to Facebook or to Twitter. These, uh, platforms also will integrate with our, uh, will tie in with messaging platforms. So we'll be able to do like we do with School Messenger, uh, from the same platform. They, you know, we'll be able to send out like a mass text that either school's closed or, you know, a back-to-school batch is on this date, and, and things like that to help inform the community, uh, the community. Apogee, uh, one of the differences that I'll point out between it and Ed Leo, um, and I've starved some of the, you know, the key differences there, but the Ed, uh, Apogee, they build, they will build us a, a mobile app, dedicated mobile app for, uh, all of our school sites and for the district site. And so, so, uh, you know, they'll be able to go, parents and students can go to the App Store, and they'll pull in, uh, an, an actual, uh, directory. So, um, like I said, you know, y'all can go in and kind of take a look at these sites and get a feel for what that would look like, uh, with these sites and how they look on your, you know, your mobile device. And, and then pull up ours on your phones and kind of take a look and see how, how it's, is right now. So I just wanted to kind of, we wanted to provide you with that information so you have something to look at and kind of think about our options going forward with that, with, uh, school sites and...
Why can't I have a time to that?
So they vary in price. Apogee was, uh...
It was the more expensive one, but I don't have the exact dollar amount.
It's probably because they're building a mobile app for us.
Right, there was more of a setup fee on those, uh, on Apogee.
So Apogee be your recommendation?
Well, um, I don't know, it depends. Because Apogee was more expensive, but, um, I mean, you know, they have their mobile app, but I don't know that that's abs, you know, like, a have-to-have thing, you know? I mean, 'cause with the other site of Ed Leo, they had, they developed their site to be mobile friendly. So, you know, they brought it up on the mobile browser on their phone, it looked like the mobile apps, so...
And that's one of the discussions we've had, is, you know, which one really is the, for the money, which one's the best?
And I've, I've reached out to some other districts that are using, using these, uh, like Van Buren County. I talked to their, uh, technology coordinator, and, you know, he was really positive about the, uh, onboarding experience they have with Apogee and how quick. Uh, he said it was about, uh, two months that it took for them to get their content. And that's another thing, these, these companies will take what content we have already, and they'll put it in there for us, so we don't have to redesign all of our websites and all of that. So, but yeah, it's about two months that it took for them to get that in. And they had a test site, and then after, I think it was, uh, a couple of weeks, and then they had it live and online.
And that just recently happened. Yeah, in February again.
So if it's fine with everybody else, um, I'll go ahead and put that on the agenda for next month. Give you all time to look at the website, see what you think about those, and we can get, uh, more information from Brent and Dr. Winningham and move forward with that, so we can make an informed decision next month. And that'll give us time to get everything up and going, and hopefully roll out beginning of next school year.
Let me ask one quick question. And this doesn't have to do with the computer, this is the business end of it. Instead of bringing us both choices and deciding, why don't you guys decide what you like and which one works better, unless there's just a drastic amount of difference, you know, we're talking about money?
Yeah, I'd go with your recommendation anyway.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know of a lot of computer, I don't know of a lot of computer people sitting up here at this table.
Well, there's one right there.
I said, "Sit at this table."
I'm fine with whoever he says to.
Yeah, because that's what we're gonna go on anyways, so it's kind of...
Well, yeah, we just wanted to let you all know kind of the options that are there, and we'll still continue to look for other options. These are just the ones that, you know, we started out with Apogee, and then we, uh, came across Ed Leo, I, you know, crossed them. And so we'll continue to look at other options and, and, you know, think about what we can do, of course, to be most cost-effective. And it, and we were talking about rolling in school, replacing School Messenger with one of these, so that'll kind of offset some costs.
You said that you talked to somebody in Van Buren County, did you talk to, I'm sure you did, Jackson County, Fentress County?
Yeah, I checked, uh, Jackson County and, uh, Fentress County, actually, they both use Ed Leo, but they only use it for their sites. They don't use it for their messaging system. I did talk to a charter school in New York that uses their, um, their messaging system. And they were very positive about the way that that messaging system works through Ed Leo. So both, both systems, you know, everybody was very positive about how well those systems work. So I think that they'll be very comparable to what we use with School Messenger right now, so...
Okay. Thank you very much for coming and writing that to us, and we'll get it on the meeting agenda for next month. On that, um, next month, if it's fine with everybody, we're gonna move the June meeting to the eighteenth. I think you have a schedule conflict with that, and Dr. Wingingham had a schedule conflict, and I had a schedule conflict, I'll be out of town also. So if that's fine with you all, we'll move it to the eighteenth, and that'll give us more time to get budget stuff in also. Is that fine with everybody on that? Okay, we'll move that to the, next thing on there, uh, Dr. Connie has prepared a draft of the strategic plan that we discussed at the, uh, board retreat we had. I encourage you all to read over this draft, and if you don't care, email me what you see in there, what you like, if you think that something needs to be changed. We'll do that, and I'll get that sent to Dr. Connie, and when she gets a final draft for us, then I'll invite her back and let her present it to the board, and she can go over everything with us. Okay? With that being said, that brings us to the end of the work session. So if we're, if we're good with it?
Couple things.
Okay?
We found anything about tennis lives from up in Carroll?
I haven't, not yet.
Okay. Then, um
I'll call it that. The guy in Smith County, I can't remember his name, I think.
Uh, then, uh, I emailed everybody a little eight-page presentation that I presented to the county, so everybody should have that. Uh, if you don't, let me know, then the last thing I got is, I've got ten emails over the last three or four days about spring sports, tournaments, conflict with these senior trips, which in my opinion, that should be up to the coaches and the administration. Um, so, I mean, I don't know if there's an answer for that, because TWS double A sets those district region tournaments, but then you start looking back at trying to get a senior trip done earlier, and you've got all this intercourse testing and everything that has to be done, and I don't know that there's an answer, and I, I just, I told them I'd bring it up, and, you know, have somebody look into it, but you know, in my opinion, that's up to the coach, to administration to kind of
Yes.
Handle out.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to bring it up.
I sent my emails on to Dr. Wingingham, uh, because like, like, as you said, you've got parents that's paid a thousand dollars for a senior trip, and you've got, and I know this spring, there's softball, soccer, and tennis that's in the region tournament going on right now. So you lose a thousand dollars so your child can play in a sport.
And I know in years past, there's some that actually flew their kids back to play, and, you know, from the senior trip.
They want to play back to the same softball game. It is a dilemma, I don't, I'm like you, I don't know the exact answer. It's back earlier in the year, it's gonna interfere with the regular season, and that, that could move you from number one all the way down to three or four, if you have a two or three games that week, so I, I don't know.
And the testing.
And the testing, it is an issue, because we have several seniors that still take intercourse tests.
I'd like to say a little something about Mike Hayes, he does an excellent job on that presentation the other night, I mean, that was very well, very well done, I commend you on that.
I agree, I was there, it was
Well, I read it in the paper, and I thought it sounded off.
I mean, he was, he did a great job.
I'm like, I'm like Larry, I heard it was good. It was, he did a great job.
Talking about the building. Talking about the building program, I got something I'd like to say. I've, I've been kind of under the weather, and I didn't get to attend any of them, but I think the, the committee did a great job. But I'd like for them to look at something else about the building program, I know there's always somebody wanting something else, but uh, I think Rickman is getting shortchanged a little bit. The reason I say that, eighteen, approximately eighteen year ago, we had the last building program we had, and we built the gyms and classrooms, but we built Rickman eighteen extra classrooms. Well, in eighteen years, they have filled those classrooms. And now we're saying, well, we'll build them four, well, they've already got enough students to fill one of them, so we're building them three extra classrooms. And I know for a fact that there's three contractors that's gonna build approximately a hundred and fifty houses in Rickman in the next two years. So there's no way in the world that they could get by with three classrooms for another eighteen year. Now, it's like, you know, I know you've done a great job, and I, I won't apologize for not attending, but I've, I've been kind of standing out, and but I wish you'd reconsider and, and try to, I know they need, I know they need more than that, because it's just not gonna work. And, and we've got, you know, people, it's gonna bring their kids there, more jobs in corporal, they're gonna drop them off, and it's just, it's just not gonna work, of course. Maybe we need to have a K through one or two or something, I don't know, but I think we need something.
I just like to see us add on a little bit more, like you said, to make longer existence, too, there, and I know of over two hundred houses fixing to be built, and two more farms is up for sale that are now just private building blocks.
So I guess we'll turn that back over to the architects and see what an additional cost would be, and go from there.
Building committee, two minutes after this, real quick.
Okay, with that being said, we're rounding the work session to an end, you're all free to go.